You're tuned into Inside Lowell, Inside Lowell Podcast, brought to you in part by Washington Savings Bank, serving the greater Lowell community for over 130 years. Make the switch now to Washington Savings Bank. Reverie 73, Lowell's number one cannabis shop. Elevate your cannabis experience at Reverie 73. Hafner's, heating and cooling homes and businesses for nearly a century. Hafner's, it kicks. And by Boston North Company, restaurant and retail solutions for your business. That's Boston North. And now time for another Inside Lowell Podcast. Inside Lowell, if Lowell is your home, this is your place.
Hello again, everybody, and welcome to another Inside Lowell Podcast. I am your host, Teddy Panos, coming to you live from the, well, I'm recording it live. I'm not really live. You're going to watch this in a recording. Coming to you from the Inside Lowell Studios here in beautiful historic downtown Lowell. Got a special podcast for you today, a candidates debate, candidates forum, whatever you want to call it, for the only contested race on the Lowell School Committee ballot. Next month, we're going to be joined with the District One School Committee Candidates, incumbent Stacy Thompson, her challenger Fred Bahu. We're going to bring them in in a quick moment. Just want to thank all of our sponsors for helping to make this podcast possible, all of our Inside Lowell podcasts possible, and of course, all of Inside Lowell possible as well. And we've added a couple of new ones that didn't appear on the introduction, but they will by the end of this week. Want to thank our friends at Unicare, offering a wide variety of plans for people insured under the GIC. At Unicare, your health is their top priority. Also, thank you as well to our friends at Mahoney Oil Company, providing warmth and protection to families in greater Lowell and southern New Hampshire since 1925. That's Mahoney Oil. And with that, turn our attention to our candidates here for the Lowell School Committee. As we mentioned, it's District One. It's that hybrid school committee district comprised of Pawtucketville and the Upper Highlands. And we'll go left to right here on your screens. Fred Bahu, the challenger in this race, an incumbent, Greater Lowell Regional Technical High School, school committee man. And to the right, Stacy Thompson, the incumbent in that district. Good morning to both of you.
Good morning.
And thank you for joining us.
Morning Ted.
Great to have you here. We're going to talk about a number of issues, going to give you a chance to make an opening and closing statement. And hopefully, our viewers throughout all of our podcast channels will be able to learn a little bit more about where you stand on the issues affecting the Lowell Public Schools. So without any further ado, opening statement, Stacy, we're going to start with you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Teddy, for this opportunity. And thank you all the Inside Lowell viewers. My name is Stacy Thompson, and I am seeking reelection for the District One seat, which is Pawtucketville Upper Highlands. So nearly two years ago, I entered into a world that I never envisioned by stepping into politics. And I have to say, the journey has been quite an interesting one. You know, the thing is, I think that if people do know me, and for those of you who are getting to know me, politics was never my thing, but showing up for people, showing my support, being there, those have always been very Stacy-like attributes. And so what I will say is this, for those of you who are getting to know me for the first time, I am somebody who was a teacher for 11 years. I have lived in the city of Lowell for 20-plus years. So I am what people would consider a blow-in, but I think I have a very firm grasp on Lowell. And my campaign pledge then and now is very much my same why. My why was Stacy's three E's, which are equity, empowerment, and educational excellence. Those are the same three things that I kind of ran on the first time, and they're the same things I'm running on now. Why? Because I think that they're very important. And also, I've been able to make inroads in each of those areas. So I'm really proud about that. What I will say is, you know, to make concrete advances takes a lot of dedication. And I've been really focused on making sure I'm with the students, with the parents, with the staff, and making sure that everybody's voices are amplified. And so I ask that you consider re-electing me, Stacy T., for School Committee, District One. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Stacy. Fred, to you.
Sure. Good morning, Teddy. Thank you for having us here for this debate. I'm looking forward to a nice lively one. Just to share with your viewers, a lot of you know me, some of you don't. I've been a lifelong Lowell resident. I've raised four children here in the city of Lowell. I've coached baseball at Calvary Park. I've coached basketball at the Highlands Basketball Community. I've invested in Lowell. I ran my own business in the city of Lowell for generations. My dad started it. I ran it for a number of years after that. We were in that business for over 40 years. Again, a lot of people know me and know what I have done. I've invested in a lot of properties in the city of Lowell. And I'm a person that really likes to renovate and get things done. I've also, you know, sat on the Greater Lowell Tech School Committee for 13 years. I've been chairman three times. I have been the head of the Budget Committee, the chairman of the Budget Committee for five years. It's important that, you know, we work to benefit our students across the board, across the whole city, not just at Greater Lowell Tech. When I first got elected to Greater Lowell Tech, we had 1,583 students from Lowell, and we're currently over 1,800. I prodded, I pushed, I kept working to go ahead and increase our student population because I really believe in the value of vocational education. Our MCAS scores have risen like there's no tomorrow at Greater Lowell Tech. Great things are happening at Greater Lowell Tech. And our graduation rate's at 95%. I think the graduation rate is very important. Unfortunately, the graduation rate at Lowell is 80%, and I think it's something that needs to be increased. We at Greater Lowell Tech, taking 1,400 applications annually, we're only accepting 600 students. So the 800 students need to go somewhere. A lot of the times, they end up in Lowell High School. Unfortunately, that may affect their graduation rate because the graduation rate is lower because they may not be working with their hands. I know some people say that we don't need vocational education at Lowell High School. I think it's vital. I think it's vital to get kids graduated. I think it's vital to get kids' work ready. And I think it's vital to go ahead and help our city, our parents, and to go ahead and assist all of the students to become better in their growth here in the city of Lowell. So I just ask you to vote for me, Fred Bahu, and I'm sure a lot of other things will come up during this conversation.
All right. Thank you both for that. First question, and we'll start with you this time, Fred. I'm going to ask you to play the role of teacher. Should be easy for you, Stacy. You did that, as you mentioned. But what letter or numerical grade would you give Lowell Public Schools?
Well, the MCAS scores are down, the graduation rates are down. I would have to give Lowell, realistically, a C minus. It just doesn't seem that there's fighting going on, you know, within the buildings pretty regularly. The buildings need a lot of work. They're breaking down. And a lot of people are choosing not to buy homes. And I know for a fact, people are choosing not to buy homes here in the city of Lowell because the school system doesn't have the best image. So that's the grade that I give.
All right, Stacy, to you.
I would say a B minus. I think that there's definitely a lot of work to do, and we have rolled up our sleeves to do that work. To Mr. Bahu's point, I definitely think that there could be reasons why people are not coming to or staying in Lowell, but I think there's a plethora of reasons, as we've been talking about, that fall into that category as well. So a B minus.
So I kind of appreciate your honesty there. Most of the times, people want to put a, you know, maybe an A or an A minus or something. That was brutally honest that there's, you know, even with a B minus, there's a lot of work to do.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that honesty. Question for you first, Stacy. Educators will tell you that third grade is the critical point for reading. A student who cannot read to level for third grade will spend their entire academic career struggling to play catch-up. So we've received information that says that about three-quarters of Lowell Public School third graders cannot read to level. Even before COVID, that number was above 50%. Why is that? And more importantly, how do we fix it?
That's a very hefty question. And I would say, you know, my mom was a second-grade teacher, and I take a lot of the ways that I think about education from her. You know, the reality of it is, education has been such a strapped and kind of, how do I, kind of a hard career path for a lot of people. There's been so much going on. And to your point, the numbers were down before COVID. COVID obviously exacerbated so much that we're seeing. I think that there's a lot, and when I look at things like the numbers even for bullying in elementary school, that also plays a role. But we also have to consider, in Lowell Public Schools, we have a very diverse population. So you have to wonder, are the, all the supports there that need to be there? Are all the language access supports there? I also feel like we often try to address these issues just by talking to the student. We need to really look at what's going on in a familial sense. Because if, you know, the parents are having issues with educational excellence on their own, then potentially, they need supports. One of the things is the Family Resource Center is doing a lot of work to kind of pair what's going on at home and in the school. So yes, there's definitely need there, and without a doubt, those numbers concern me. We've been really looking at, okay, what have we not addressed? Two years is a short period of time to really address all the issues that I've seen and want to address. That's why I want to go back to really dive into some of those issues in a deeper way.
Fred, why are those third-grade reading numbers so disappointing? And what can be done to fix it?
Well, you know, for many years, many school districts have been trying to implement full-day kindergartens in their classrooms, in their settings. It just goes to say, tell you how fragile education is at such a young age, and how students are able to learn at a very young age, and how they need to grow. So I think the best way to go ahead and increase their reading scores, their math scores and such like that, would be realistically have tutors, have a lot of one-on-one with the students and the teachers to go ahead and help them, you know, understand, see where they are in comprehension in the first grade and in the second grade, so that we can just keep on progressing them forward, but moving them in a slow way and not trying to sort of chase, you know, what the number, sort of react after the fact. We don't want to react after. We want to go ahead and be encouraging with tutors and teachers and paraprofessionals from day one while they're in the classroom. And I think you'll see numbers improve at that point.
If I could also just add to that, one thing that I'm glad that you mentioned that is that we've done a lot of work on the pre-K level. So we've done a lot of work. We've made a lot of investment because we do know that those numbers need to come up. So if you can really get young people invested in education early, understanding how to run through a system and how to be in the classroom, because that's a teaching of its own, you're going to see those numbers start to go up. So that's why we've made such a stark investment in the pre-K and in the kindergarten classroom settings.
Okay. To that end, we hear a lot about partners and stakeholders in education, especially in a city like Lowell. And oftentimes, those partners are providing some of those services, right? Pre-K, after-school, whatever. But also, that means they're taking potential money out of Lowell Public Schools. And Lowell Public Schools has a huge infrastructure. Why can't, well, can Lowell Public Schools provide those same services more efficiently and keep them in-house? And if not, why? Why can't they provide them more efficiently than, say, an outside firm or outside stakeholder slash partner? Fred, we're going to start with you.
It's important that we go ahead and try to do everything within our school community. Because when we, because our school community is the foundation of our education. And if we're not giving the students the foundation, they're using outside stakeholders, they're really not committed to the Washington School, or the Bailey School, or the Lincoln School. It's important that we give them their foundation, and they know who their teachers are, and they're in the buildings, and they're identifying with them. When we choose outside resources, firstly, we're investing in something that we're spending money on, and these outside sources only are there for a short period of time. When the money runs out, or when the money begins to dry up, all of a sudden, we're not using them anymore. We're sending that student back to that school, and they don't have a real relationship. So I think relationship building, I think that the school districts can do this, and I don't know that we need outside assistance.
Stacy?
You know, as I said before, the educational infrastructure has been so tapped. I think that it's always good to build from within. I think it's good, even in our mind, is, you know, taking those high school seniors and getting them interested in becoming educators back in, to kind of keep that cycle going. They know Lowell, they understand kind of what we do here. But I also understand that, I mean, in the last couple of years, we've had such a hard time maintaining teachers, keeping paraprofessionals engaged. And I think that what we need to do is really have those conversations. I think Mr. Bahu spoke to, you know, having relationship building. Relationship building is integral everywhere across the board. So if you can do that, if you can really assess what are the needs, what would keep people in the district? How can we build things out? Because it's really great to say we want to do these things, but we have to actually have the know-how and the ability to do so.
Okay. I want to shift towards kind of controversies in hiring practices. The very well-publicized, you know, outside investigation into the hiring practices. And a lot of folks thought that was just a witch hunt against the prior superintendent, et cetera. This is kind of a two-part question. First of all, how much of a disaster are the hiring practices, given that we have to bring in an outside investigator? And but the second part of that one is, why do all the controversies in the school department always seem to involve hiring? Who got hired? Which department got budget preference versus another department? How come we never have any real controversies about some of the things we talked about earlier? The fact that we're, our graduation rates aren't where they should be, could be? And student learning, et cetera. Stacy, we're starting with you.
So the, first of all, the whole desire to have an outside council was controversial for many reasons. People thought we were just using money that we didn't need to be using. People thought we should use the councils that we had in-house in the city. However, even in speaking with those councils, they said they didn't have the bandwidth. So for us to go external was because, first of all, there was the shifting of the guards multiple times in the city. And so we listened to what they said. They said that they couldn't do it. We said, look, we can't keep holding this back. It had been something dangling over for, before my term, dangling kind of in the atmosphere about the hiring practices. What I will say is, hiring is always something, and that's actually my background before teaching. I was a recruiter. So I have a real kind of extensive hiring background. It's tricky. And unfortunately, sometimes people are put in positions where they don't know kind of what logistically they can and cannot do, should and should not do. For us to do this, for me, is to eliminate any, this person did this, he said, she said. I'm about transparency. So if you can create a system where transparency is key, and nobody can say Teddy reached out to this person, or Fred reached out to this person because they know this person, it eliminates that. And that's what I think the parents were really excited about. There's a lot that I've heard for years, right? It's who knows who? This person knows this person? This is where Lowell's always done it, right? But for us, it was enough of that. If we want different, we have to do different. And so that's why we move forward with it.
Right?
Sure. Yes, so outside council was hired. Again, I don't know that we needed outside council to work on our hiring process. I think maybe our superintendent should come up with a policy or a plan, maybe working with the school committee, to come up with that policy or plan, so that it can be sort of in a step process. And it's a respectful, it's a respectful process. Realistically, we need to hire the best teachers available out there. We need to hire the best professional, paraprofessionals out there. And sometimes, there's hiring going on because there is no pool, and we're not able to go ahead and find our best teachers or paraprofessionals who are not licensed. We need to really chase licensing. But realistically, we need, most importantly, to have a process that is fair and equitable for this whole community.
Okay. Stacy, we'll start with you this time. To you, what was the signature motion of your first term on the school committee? Which one are you proudest of? Which one do you think was most impactful?
I mean, I'm trying to go between two because I really have two that I'm really very, very proud of.
Let's hear them both.
The first one, I would say, is getting the financial wellness program in the schools. I am a big proponent on financial knowledge. And, you know, we're wanting our students to move ahead without the bare minimum. And I know that there were like trickles of here and there. There was some finance being taught here and there, but there was no specific curriculum. And now it's been rolled out in the middle schools. So I'm really excited about that. And then it's going up to the high schools where it already kind of registered, and then down into the, down into the elementary school. So I'm very proud about that. The other thing that I would say is the dashboard for transparency for bullying, discrimination, and racism issues. That dashboard has been so eye-opening for the community. And I will say that when I get stopped, when I get talked to from parents from the community, they thank me for the transparency because they didn't know how much was really happening and how many people were suffering. Because quite frankly, people are often embarrassed, they suffer in silence, they're not sharing their stories. And there are so many people now that know, man, middle school is rough for these kids. They're going through a lot of situations. And so I would say the transparency on that. And now I've kind of prompted them, okay, now that we know the numbers, now what are we going to do about it? So now we have to get to root cause and moving on beyond that. But those are two that I'm extraordinarily proud of.
All right. And Fred, a little twist on this. You've served on the Greater Lowell Regional Technical High School Committee for a while. What's the signature motion in your time? What do you think has been the most important motion that you, or initiative that you've been able to launch?
To take a look at what works. And, you know, when I came onto the school committee, what didn't work? What didn't work was certain shops. Certain shops like small engine repair, there was no real, students weren't signing up. Students were not really being job-ready because there wasn't a lot of small-engine repair shops. And there was also a painter, I'm sorry, not a painting, but a fashion technology. Again, same thing. It was not getting a lot of students to sign on to it. So what we were doing was, we, I came up with the plan to go ahead and look at all of our shops, out of antiquated shops that aren't working anymore. And what we ended up doing was removing those two shops. We replaced our small-engine repair. We actually made our auto collision larger. And we, and as far as the fashion tech, we took that space and we made an engineering program out of it. So I think those programs are beneficial to our students. And looking at, you know, and looking at the options were very important to me.
All righty, you're tuned into Inside Lowell Podcast. Today, you are watching a debate between the Lowell School Committee Candidates, vying to represent District One, a hybrid of the Upper Highlands Pawtucketville Neighborhoods. Stacy Thompson to the right of your screen, she is the incumbent in the race. Fred Bahu, the challenger in this race. Fred, let's start with you this time. Do the Lowell Public Schools spend their money wisely?
You need to watch your money as best as you can. I don't know if they spend it wisely, but I'll tell you this. They're currently working on a new Lowell High School project downtown that's costing the taxpayers $120 million. In the state, $280 million to be the cost of $400 million. And it doesn't seem like there's any meetings. Nobody really knows what's going on. Nobody understands the timeline of when this project may or may not be done. That the, it seems like the project manager is sort of doing what they want, and nobody's really watching it. And when we did a $60 million project, we met monthly on that. And by meeting monthly, you're holding the project manager accountable. And we're not holding anyone accountable for what's happening at Lowell High School renovation. So if nobody's accountable, then we have to go ahead and make them accountable. So we need to spend the money wisely on that.
Okay. I just want to jump in for a quick second here and give you a chance to add to that if you wanted. The word I wanted to use was efficiently. Wisely is a very, very subjective. So is efficiently. But, you know, if I asked you if they were spending the money efficiently, does your number change? Does your answer change at all?
Well, let's be real. If it was, we're being spent efficiently, you'd be graduating more students. Your MCAS numbers would be higher. So you'd be hiring the best teachers out there. Sometimes, we need to look at the buildings. And we're not, you know, and that's a city council thing. But realistically, if we're not maintaining our buildings, are we spending the money efficiently? Because everybody seems to be bothered by that. The teachers feel like they're walking in an unhealthy environment. The students are really not grabbing on to, you know, their education because they're cold, or the plumbing isn't working correctly. But we need to focus on educating children, and we have to spend the money on educating children. And that's through tutors, and that's through teachers, and that's through paralegals. And our administration has to look from the top down, not from the bottom up.
Stacy?
Fiscal responsibility is very important. And I will say that this has been an interesting time period because we've had, you know, an influx of money, right? So most people, when they're thinking about how we're spending the money, and we do have a very, really hefty budget, I think it's like five times of what the tech's budget is. So it's a healthy, healthy Chapter 70 budget. What I will say is, I have really looked at ways that we can be fiscally responsible. So some of my motions, as an example, with the high school, I said, hey, are we putting solar panels on the high school so that we can get some type of, you know, money back for the taxpayer? It's important. What about these boilers? You know, we're trying to become, you know, off the grid, so to speak, or have a better footprint. And I think they're trying to put in the old boilers. Like, that doesn't make sense because we're going to have to change them out per what the city's trying to do as an initiative. So I've been really paying attention to that, pushing that through as some of my motions because I do know that the taxpayer deserves to know what's going on. To that end, I have also decided to spend money where I feel like it's really important. The, you know, the reality is that that foolishness at the Pawtucketville with mold, that's just unacceptable. And so for me, I'm like, you know what? We're going to have to spend money to make sure that those students and the staff that work in that school can go into, you know, an environment where they're not putting themselves in harm's way. And so, you know, we spend the money where I feel like, we feel like it's important. There have been lots of things we've spent money on. Obviously, the school is a huge thing. But we've also spent money on our staffing. We've spent money on mental health because mental health needs have been out of control. And so we've spent tons and tons of money on that. We've also spent money on COLI to try to make sure that they can have that specific, you know, bill out as well. So there's been lots of, I'm proud of lots of the spending. We're always paying attention to that, though, and really keeping a fine eye, at least I am, on the budget.
All right. Brief follow-up to that. And I think you kind of gave hints in your answers, but I want to address it directly. Is the school department top-heavy? Since, follow-up, Fred, I'll start with you.
Probably so. Again, you know, administration is vital to any school district. However, if your, if your numbers are not corresponding to graduations and greater MCAS scores and students who are growing within their education, then it means that you're not spending enough money on the students, but you're spending more money on administration.
Stacy?
I agree and disagree. So I do agree that it's really important to pay attention to how many people you're hiring at the administration level because the money should be going to things that directly, and I'm not going to say they don't directly impact the students. But, you know, you need to make sure the paraprofessionals are getting their pay, the cafeteria workers, the teachers in the classroom, the social workers, and so on and so forth. But that being said, I think it's also, it's kind of dangerous to specifically state that if the money is coming in, then it automatically makes higher MCAS scores. Because there are other things that impact those scores, which is why some schools have moved away from them altogether. So, you know, I think it's really, really imperative to just be mindful of that. Yes, and is kind of the way that I look at that.
All righty. Final question. Stacy, you're going to lead off here. Transportation Director Johnny Dakota, now a candidate for city council, says he has a plan that would allow a return to neighborhood schools. And that plan would not run afoul of any federal guidelines or requirements that forced us to not have them in the first place. Do you support that plan or some variation of that plan that would return Lowell Public Schools to a more neighborhood school model?
I grew up in Belreka. I had a neighborhood school. I walked to school, right? So I understand why people like that idea. My issue with neighborhood schools has never been actually neighborhood schools within themselves. It's more about the fact that if you're going to do neighborhood schools, then you need to work on the schools being more equitable. And because they're not there yet, that's where I have the issue. Once, schools should not have like the newest, greatest playground, and the other school has a horticulture that has cracks in it, right? So that's where I have issue. Lots of, like, you have the STEM program that has all these great things potentially, right? Or the Pine Arts that has all these great things, but then some schools that have the bare minimum. So for me, it's looking at, how can I get these schools to have, or how can I have the students have a more equitable experience across the board? And then I would be more open to that. I do get where he was going with that. It's been a very trying time for transportation. I get lots of calls regarding transportation. As I mentioned before on an earlier interview, I think that we have talked about other options, buying our own buses. And Johnny mentioned, our, excuse me, counselor-to-be potentially, Dakota, mentioned that that is something that he would, you know, think that would also be a great idea, having our own, you know, bringing things here in Lowell so we control them. And again, it helps revenue as well.
Okay. But if I can summarize that, you don't believe we're ready yet to go to that model?
No.
Okay? Fred?
Sure. We've got a major busing issue. We have Sure. We've got a major busing issue. We have issues in the city transporting kids. And I think the toughest thing about transporting children is, I live in the Highlands, and sometimes, you know, the kids go over to the McCalliff School or they go over to the Robinson School, and we're putting them in a bus for, I don't know, thirty or forty minutes to get to school on that day. And then we're putting them in a bus, sending them back home for thirty or forty minutes. I think that time could be spent better for the student because when they're in the bus at the beginning of the day, they get, they're a little groggy and they're a little tired. Are they really ready for, are they really ready for their education or for their, for their school day? And you're getting the kids tired. So when they come home, are they able to do their homework? Are they able to keep up with what they need to do? Therefore, with those statements being made, I think it's important to have neighborhood schools because I think neighborhood schools are what keeps students together, and the kids actually know each other. And the parents will sort of begin to know each other because they all live within the community, and they're all growing with the community. It's important that people understand that we're not gonna favor one school or the other. We're going to build them out. We're going to make them all better. We're gonna make them fair and equitable for everybody. And I know the Pine Arts is a beautiful-looking school, and I also know that the Baileys is a great-looking school. But I also know there's deterioration happening at the Lincoln, and I know there's deterioration happening over at the Daley and up at the Robinson. But realistically, we need to focus on making the buildings better. But bottom line is, neighborhood schools are going to alleviate our transportation issue, and they're also going to go ahead and make, I think, the community grow and educate the students best.
But you would be ready on day one if such a motion comes up to vote yes in favor of it?
I think we'd have to study it a bit, day one, which means it would be implemented, you know, within a year. I can't say yes, yes. I think I've got to do a little bit more work on it to look at what the positives are and what the negatives are. Stacy brought up some pretty good negatives, and so that we can go ahead and make an educated decision.
Okay. And with that, we've reached the end of our questioning. So closing statements. Stacy, we started this with you. So Fred, you get to make the closing statement first.
Fred Bahu, I've sat on Greater Lowell Tech for thirteen years. I am totally committed to the city of Lowell by running my own business and investing in the city for a long time. I have always wanted education to be the top priority. Many people have asked me over the years, why don't you run for city council? I'm like, it's all about the schools. Everything is about the schools. If we don't educate our kids, we really do not, we're a failure to our system. I love being on Greater Lowell Tech School Committee. I think that I could help the Lowell School Committee by the knowledge that I bring from Greater Lowell Tech, adding vocational programming, increasing our MCAS scores, working on special needs. You know, the special needs category, kids do not get, you know, as much assistance as we hope that we could offer them. And why do I say that? Because I'm knocking on doors and people are asking me, what about special education? Special education takes up twenty percent of our student population. It needs to be addressed because the parents are nervous, they're very bothered, they're upset, they don't know what's going to happen with their children. And we need to go ahead and give them the guidance and the assurance that we can go ahead and assist them. So there's lots of different things that need to be looked at in Lowell School Committee. I will bring some new ideas, some fresh new ideas, and I will work hard and diligently for the students of Lowell.
Thank you, Fred. Stacy?
First of all, Teddy, thank you for this opportunity to come before your audience and really talk about who I am and what I'm about. This journey has been something that I never expected, and it has been quite a learning lesson. And as a teacher, a former teacher, lifelong learner, I think it's important to really take in all that I've learned. I think that it's been the honor that I didn't expect to have as being District One School Committee member. I've been able to connect with students, parents, community members, educators, and really bring their issues to the forefront, which has been so important for me. I think that the other thing that I really appreciate is, they've been able to have real conversations with me about things that are really concerning to them. And so I've been able to bring those things forward. Words of thanks they've brought to me, and it's just been a really great opportunity. As the first Black woman elected in office, the first woman of color on the school committee member, great badges. I carry them with honor. However, I would also like people to consider the badge of my achievements because I've made some really great and strong achievements in this one term that I've been in, in this position. I have felt that, or maybe you have felt, for those of you who are watching, you might have felt that voting for me the first time was a gamble. I'm hoping that this time around, you have learned who Stacy is, you know my heart for the city and for the city's young people. And that's really why I want to return to the chambers and be able to continue this work. I want to return to the conversations. I want to return to the emails and all the phone calls and all the other things that have allowed for your concerns to be heard. I want to be the voice for, or amplifying the voice of all of your concerns. And so please, I ask that you support me on November seventh. Stacy T. for Lowell School Committee.
All right. And with that, we conclude our candidates' debate forum. Stacy, Fred, thank you very much for joining us here this morning and record this. This will be live on Wednesday morning, October fourth, and I think the voters out there, the viewers out there now have a little better understanding of where you stand and how you would govern going forward. So thank you very much. Good luck out there on the campaign trail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to the candidates, and thank you as well for joining us here on Inside Lowell. Inside Lowell. As we like to say, if Lowell is your home, this is your place. Until next time, stay safe, everybody.